Heard that one.
You should eat too. Oh, David should eat too, for sure. We're gonna get started. Thank you so much for being here. And it's Kathy.
Welcome. It's nice to see all of you and those of you who are at home. It's a pleasure to finally be able to... Our first town hall was totally virtual, so it's nice to have a town hall where we can actually see people. And I would like to welcome you all. And hopefully you will have some really good questions for us at the end. But I'd like to introduce my board. So we've got... Why don't you stand up, those of you? I think most of you are right up here in front. We have Terry Pierce, Sam Pratt, Jed Gushman, Chris Ng, and David Pratt, who is standing up right now. So, I mean, why don't you turn around to the camera so that they can all see you at home? Because we're in person and virtual. So we have a pretty robust agenda for you tonight. So I'm gonna go right ahead and get Nancy talking to you about programs. And then we'll move on to Jed Gushman, who will talk to you about development, and then Sam Pratt. And then I will come back up and talk to you about the auction. So, here you go, Nancy.
Thanks, Kathy. I'm gonna force myself to be comfortable behind the podium. Right, because Queasy told me that's the best place to stand. And when a student tells you that's the best place to stand, that's where you need to stand. So I'm just gonna plug out, I'm gonna plug out a podcast program. We're gonna do a major overview. There's lots of amazing people in this group right now. We can see directly about the program. I'm just gonna represent for the team tonight. And we're gonna be way, we're gonna get into more specifics that we might have more teams come up and speak to the program. We're gonna cover more specific areas because there are pieces that we're in the middle of, there are pieces you might be hearing from us about because we might have to send a survey and get input from you in different ways. But the first is that it's time for you to add it in the daily schedule. And you're wondering what is the best. But one of the very first, I don't know how many people remember, a year ago last weekend was my inner Uwe weekend. My year ago, my first time ever setting foot on Hawaii. And so, wow, what a year can hold. And couldn't even really imagine where this would be, where I would be. And it was very dreamy. But one of the unexpected situations I was asked to be was I didn't know I was asked to sit with the entire sixth to fourth grade in a gym all at the same time. And when I went home, they were just gonna ask me questions. Okay, that sounds great. And actually, I had one that I was like, oh, you need me to do that? No problem, I got that. And it was actually really fun. But one of the first questions, getting back to this topic, one of the first questions was actually a member, it's actually from Bella. She said, "We have one of the longest days on the island. We have kids coming for more than an hour late. How do we feel about that schedule? What are you gonna do about it?" That was heading in a good question by a student in front of the entire school. So, from that moment, and then read easily as we got into the work, what it means to think about how we use learning time? When was the last time we evaluated our learning time across the board? From our three-year-olds all the way to our 12th graders? How should we do we differentiate between a sixth grader and a 12th grader? What's the difference that elementary needs versus middle school? And really doing that, when was the last time we evaluated that with many voices in the space? So we have embarked on a journey of a process. Nathaniel Hudson and Jenna Hawke are the co-chairs of the task force. And they're working with the consultant for us to move through this process and really look at how do we use time? So we've already done a survey with the faculty. We're gonna be having a survey with older students. I can't remember how, what age at elementary we're gonna lead into that survey. But to get input from students, we'll also be sending a survey to parents and adults. So just look out for that because we wanna know, and we're taking all this input as we really shape our days and learning time. So we hope we get that input, we hope we respond to it because it's invaluable. When three people respond, their voices are really loud. So the more people respond, which is fine. Three people responding is fine. But the more people respond, the broader we can look at how we think about our days. So it's a really meaningful area to have and really a meaningful process to go through as a program and to begin that process of gaining input from all across different constituents. We'll also be doing, we call it a timed texture session. Which really, again, if you like puzzles, that's gonna help. Like planning around, how do you make all this work? You need certain requirements, you need certain time and exposure to different subjects. And having kids play around with, and adults play around with, how we build out our time and schedule. So look out, there's gonna be a family survey meeting in this week's compass. So you can just click on that, it should be pretty easy for you to share. And it's really from your point of view, there's a ton of questions from a family point of view. I'm not gonna ask you about internally because you're not here on a daily basis internally. But what do you see at home? What are different pieces? And of course, there's open comments if you wanna share them. The next thing I wanna talk about is, well, specifically, and I'm gonna highlight learning voyage because we're doing some shifts particularly for grades six to twelve. But the overall topic really is about why can learning voyage exist? And it's really about the power, the real power of interdisciplinary and personal learning for students. And to have that as a forward priority, what does that look like? And so, reality is for Napo Kiki, who all the way through grade five, interdisciplinary and personal learning happens all the time. It happens on field trips. When you just saw, oh, you go to market today, dang. I mean, I got some energy in, come on. And I learned what hard ice, what is it called? Hard ice, learned what that was today. I haven't had that before. Maybe one other time? So that was grade, mark day of their grade. And whether it's on campus or traveling off campus to the salt ponds, lots of different experiences like that happen in Napo Kiki grades five is the flexibility of a program and the way of how it helps young people put their learning together. And that means program, you can imagine we get some middle of high school because the demands of programming start to be intentional with the moral of the kind of learning and project learning. So one of the ways our school has tended to look at that is developing learning voyage. So, and I'm going to get here on, it was a few years ago that learning voyage started for the first time. And we're gonna try a new year. But it was a few years ago, so it's still relatively new. And the goal though, we're turning towards what? To be very intentional about that work. So what does it really do for us institutionally? So we know that all of our students have exposure into certain areas so we can be really clear about who our graduates are. So the middle schools can develop and be really connected to the science program, but also in an interdisciplinary way. The sixth grade will focus on I am. And because the science program is earth science, the seventh grade will focus on fire and water because the curriculum for life science is gonna be the foundation is water. And looking at reef work, getting, being out on the water. So there's gonna be a lot of permission forms. Never seen so many permission forms at school in my life. I'm like, wow, that's a lot. I'm curious as a parent too. Honey, you're charging this one this week. And then the eighth grade, I think fire, earth and the space is the science foundation. That's gonna be their work. And then you'll see that rotate. So then it's creating a foundation and tradition of that programming so that when you know, when you come seventh grader, you're gonna have this range of experiences connected to the water. When you get to eighth grade, actually the goal is actually you're gonna go to Big Island and extend that earth and science to learning to volcanoes. You know, so fire, fire. And then the ninth grade, which hopefully, at this point, we've got students, there's not a lot of fluctuating, we've got a whole crew of kids. The foundation's a voyager. We are voyagers. Do we actually know what that means? Are we graduating kids that aren't clear about what it means to be a voyager? It's our mascot. We gotta know. And so we're gonna do that foundational work in ninth grade. Okay, I'm gonna tune up a little bit of that. Tenth grade, focusing on the semester study of going history. I've just had a really fun after year meeting with Tina Yu talking about the EMO and really taking the EMO as a learning, really creating it as a learning center. But it'll be a whole process for the kids for the tenth grade. And then eleven and twelve grade, as a program, it'll be more individualized. Sometimes it'll be college visits, sometimes it'll be different smaller experiences. I know there's some that will be developed. There's other opportunities, experiences. It doesn't mean that long distance travel is going away completely. This year, we do have a very large thing in the high school, traveling to Japan. That was a trip that was set in motion years ago, like as many as two, two to three years ago. We are looking at, because we wanna really build these foundational programs by grade level, that to take multi-grade level students out of the program to travel during this time is, it takes away from the overall content. So we're looking at either spring rates or summer travel, other than rate kind of travel for language-based trips and other content still based for trips that we would leave but that would have not been a learning voyage. Okay? And another part, if you are not aware, to be an independent school, that's a credit. It's because of the Association of Independent Schools. Every seven years, you go through a full self-study process. It's my lucky year. That I left a school when I was writing the program and they want the rating review right now. And I arrived just in time to write the draft of this, for this school, and help lead the process. And then we will be visited by a team exactly, basically, a year from now, in 2025. So our goal is to have that finished draft by June. And what that means is it's truly meant to be self-study. And then no longer really allow new heads of school to decline and say, can we do that? Can I just do that a little bit later? Because really, if we do it right, it'll be a truly meaningful learning experience for me, for any new families, for our team to go through that process together. And so you are gonna see us doing some different kinds of activities, asking for feedback with our, within, for our faculty staff and students, and also with families. So you'll be able to see, again, another survey about that. We might have focus groups, so if you're able to come in, different opportunities to be a part of that accreditation process. But these processes, I happen to be leaving at the end of the month to be on the command and schools accreditation team where I will stay. I wanted to, the way these work is it's volunteers from different schools. Different leaders from different schools serve as the accreditation team. And they often don't ask a new head of school to do that. And I said, you know what? We're about to have an accreditation. I'd like to go through that process in Hawaii so I can know what that process is like. And then two days later, they asked, would you like to be on the Kapalama campus for the accreditation? And I said, yes, please. I said, it'll be a great experience for me and I'll be able to bring back so much to the school through that process as well. I'll be able to serve as a volunteer in that way. But it'll also be an education for how this process is different and how it's like. They're very similar. In fact, the chair of the Kapalama accreditation process is actually from San Diego with a lot of educators from Hawaii. Two co-chairs are actually from Hawaii as well. So, that isn't bad. It's a very important, so for seven years, it'll serve us to look at our strategic planning, cameraman's planning. A good accreditation will serve how we look into the future. It's a great foundational document. Okay, and the final thing that we are in the middle of, and SHAN is the center of all things in this. So re-enrollment will be in at the end of the month. Deposits are due at mid-February. Our goal for next year is five hundred four students. That's our total student body. We'll have some addition in Napo Kiki and high school. But basically, elementary and middle will be basically where they are right now in terms of size. We have Napo Kiki open house this Saturday. We have someone, anyone who's interested. We'd love to know if it's, but we'll set up. If you can handle more, if you wanna just swing on by. For families who are applying for financial aid, please, 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 it's been open and available. Please complete it as soon as possible. Using our 2002 documents is absolutely okay. In fact, you should have them because it's, you know, it's already time to do our 2003 ones. But to have that be finalized, to have any award finalized, any aid finalized, we do need your 2003. So it is that time. I remember doing that process when my older child was like, oh, it's already time to do tasks. Gotta do it. And so, we are really trying to set a goal of helping communicate financial aid along with admissions processes so that families can know and understand the whole package of what we're looking at at the same time. And then of course, applications are due as soon as possible. The priority deadline is already passed. But if you wanna make sure you're in it or you have a friend, or this is one of the best ways our schools grow and have wonderful families, is encourage folks to come visit all SHAN. Apply, get in there, and this is the time. This is the season. Okay? So admissions, we're having folks come to campus all the time. Alrighty. As my fast-talking version of four highlights for the school. And it's my flagrant, please get a new room. We'll be much taller against the older.
More money, less energy is what I bring. Thanks for giving time out eight days and for those of you tuning in, we appreciate it. Just wanna say I was on the search committee and had the pleasure of meeting Nancy first through Zoom and then in person. And she has definitely overdelivered. I was starting to initiate by her passion, her energy was powerful. It was in the first six months, it was pretty inspiring. So I think we're very fortunate to have her along here.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about the development side of the school on behalf of our development committee and our development team. Versus the relationship tuition fund versus annual fund and the Royal KDA.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So, relationship with funding, raising tuition. So my margin, tuition provides some jewelry. Funds, probably a school seventy-seven percent. Brands, donations, or your annual fund with the Roya Dier Fund. One raising six percent. Piece of pie is the auction, the most funds per student of the year. And program fees wrap up that one, seven percent. Tuition fees, obviously, it's a mixed feeling. As a parent, I have two kids and getting a bunch with a school by tuition is necessary and raising tuition is something that you have to do. But we try to be sensitive to the impact on what's going to be happening. Moving into the Royer Fund, looking at 2022. Hundred and ten thousand raised last year. Greatly improved, a hundred and fifty-one thousand. This year, our goal is a hundred and seventy-five. And we are already well on our way. That's a great response. December, we have four matches that concede the common as beauty and we're going to stretch to a hundred thousand. So the Royer Fund is critical. It gives us unrestricted funds we can use to fund classroom activities, to do arts, and to do, for example, full participation in our whole beauty. And finally, the role of endowment. Endowment is something that not all of you may be familiar with. And we have a relatively small endowment, about a million in unrestricted endowment funds. Each year, we're drawing five percent of that. So that gives us a million dollars a year. Right now, we're focusing that money on teacher compensation. We're trying to raise the total compensation for our hard workers. So here is an endowment, it's pretty big for not only in the near term, supporting our faculty and staff, but for the long term, the larger growth or optionality about a few days in the school for the period long term. And we thought, long range, forget planning, at least get down in line at the near term. Everything we can spare for the endowment is initially goes to this, where our faculty and staff and that road can ensure the long-term financial office. That's a good thing, endowment. I'm gonna turn over to Kathy about the auction. Thank you.
Thanks, Jed. The development part of their board is really, really important. And we're lucky to have Jed that is running this. So, I'm a school auction, which you saw, brings in quite a bit of money to help with the operations. March 2nd at the Royal Sinesta. You should be getting emails and maybe phone calls saying, please come, buy a ticket, buy a table, be a sponsor. We are in need of sponsorships. They are, yeah, various categories from presenting sponsor, which is twenty-five thousand, to a diamond sponsor, which is twelve thousand five hundred. Platinum is six thousand two hundred fifty. Gold is four thousand five hundred. Silver is twenty-five hundred and bronze is twelve fifty. And a table is two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And a table is for ten people. But we encourage you to pump it up and be a sponsor. You get some benefits with that. And if it's your business, we provide ad space in both the program as well as in the compass and some other places. So, and you can help by getting your friends to come by the table and filling it with your friends. It's a great way to entertain. And we're also looking for auctioneys. And we do, for those who have not been to an auction before, we have a live auction, which has about sixteen items set. We have an auctioneer that comes from Honolulu. He does this as a donation for us. He's quite well-known in the nonprofit auction community. So we're lucky to have Eric Schiff back this year. And so, those items are kind of the higher-end items. The items that tend to draw a bigger dollar amount. And they go from quilt to trips to, last year was tequila tasting. And that was so well, and we ended up doing two. Thank you to the donors. And if you have other things that are maybe smaller, you can do for the sign-in auction and online, highschool.org. If you go to the auction, excuse me, you can download a donor commitment form. And you can also buy a table as a sponsor by going online. But you can then bring it in and reach it to our development office. We have a dedicated staff, Alena, who is working to work on the auction. And then the last thing is that we need volunteers. And you can volunteer in many ways. You can volunteer from your home by doing follow-up phone calls or various things. Or you can actually go out and follow up with the letters that we sent out or to the community, primary businesses to solicit or pick up auction items. Or you can do some follow-up after the auction. And also come down to the auction and help set up. That's really a fun day. We start usually Friday. And then on Saturday, we do all the finishing work. And it's a wonderful way to get to know other parents and interact with others. And I've made some great friends since, I don't know if you noticed, but my children graduated from eighth grade in high school because when my son graduated, there was no high school. And so, I'm, one of them was before the high school and the other was after the high school. But she wanted to go with her brother, kind of. school, but she wanted to go with her brother, and then got into water polo and didn't want to come back. But now that we don't have that, that you can keep your children here and don't have to send them away, which was really a tough thing. But it's all due to everybody getting together and helping. So if you have any questions or want to donate something, I'm happy to help you. You can call me, email, email me, or Paul S. or Megan or Jennifer in the development office. So now I'm going to turn it over to Sam, who's going to talk to you more about our financials.
I'm going to go ahead and, geez, I'm not tall, but I'm old, heard. Still don't know how to operate the computer. So I'm Sam Pratt, I'm the treasurer, board director, and I've been on the board for about fifteen years, been treasurer for ten or so, and I'm talking today about overall financial health of the school, a little bit about operating revenues and expenses, just touch on enrollment and what our budget focuses are for this year. And as you see, parents, I have some twenty and twenty-two, both my boys, went all the way through, two years pre-K all the way, and we're grateful for the school being here. We know there's choices, and you can look at other schools elsewhere, and we chose Island School because we enjoyed the experience, enjoyed the boys. So you have showed this slide earlier, that large piece of the pie is net tuition and fees. Net tuition being defined as, you know, there's a gross kind of wrap rate, and then there's people who receive financial aid, and there's different discounts, and net tuition is the total amount that we take in in tuition and fees, fees such as food service, bus, et cetera. And very clearly there, as Jed already pointed out, as much tuition as we can possibly pay here, it does not cover the full cost of our education here at the school. This is just the operations here. I should just stop for a second and recognize the building exactly, kitty corner on the campus, the brand-new Pratt Hall there, nothing to do with this pie chart at all, capital campaigns, capital fundraising, generally it's not part of the annual operations. When we do those big projects, so oftentimes as a donor or as somebody who pays tuition, it's sometimes it's a little murky and cloudy. It's not black and white. There's capital projects like that aren't generally part of the operations, and then there's many operations of the annual school year, so that's a whole other thing. So this is last year's pie, and I will say that seventy-seven percent, you know, three-fourths, eighty percent of that area, it's not uncommon for independent schools in Hawaii, other schools very similar to that, and it's not uncommon for island schools, it's picked a lot of that level for ever and ever. It's not like a new phenomenon that we're reflecting last, why is that happening? Not the case at all. It's always like this. Pretty typical. Now, these are the expenses. Again, I'd say pretty typical, you got plant maintenance, ten percent, institutional administrative type of services, ten percent, programmatic materials and services, and then you have this large blue pie, thirty-two percent this year for compensation benefits. Again, not uncommon for independent schools here in Hawaii, not uncommon for island school, not uncommon for nonprofits at all, very normal, two-thirds to three-quarters of the expenses of nonprofit generally in compensation. So as that compensation wants to move around, so too does the whole financial model then have to move around, obviously. You have to do some math on that. We don't have enough time for that. You want to stay after, there's extra credit. Our goals for our budget this year, budget changes, really, as we talked about coming into this year with Nancy, and I should say, by the way, that we didn't plan any questions, the question from the student was completely organic and generated from the student. It tended to be that way. When James, my son, does the search of twenty years after Nancy decides to move along in twenty years, hopefully some student will ask the same types of questions again. It's a great time in the search process. I think it's wonderful for the students to interact with the children, to see how great our children are, to ask wonderful questions. So our top goal immediately is to address compensation gap for faculty and staff. What does that mean, gap? There's a couple of different gaps you could imagine. One is just the cost of living of being on Kauai, and how much we could pay people at Island School is, at times, there's a gap there. We could, you know, we do our best to pay as much as we can, but it's expensive to live here. Housing is crazy. Many of our faculty and staff have more than just this job. So we're trying to see how we can address that. Secondly, our pay is what it is, and we'll try to strengthen it, be competitive with other schools of our type, and try to be mindful that we should try to compete with the DOE. DOE is a different animal down the street, very different system, lots of different things going on there, but we should try our best to be relevant with them. So that's what we need by gap, and just saying, we really want to make that a priority for the next year, or three, or five, begin to address the financial needs of our staff, because the success of our education lies with those educational professionals to inspire our children, right? They're here doing a great job and passionate about their work and committed. It's going to run off on our students. They're going to be lifelong learners. They're going to be growing forever. That's what we want. So we need that to attract and retain the best staff we can. Sustaining and grow program as needed, including additional staffing. As more enrollment happens, there's more staffing needed. As we grow enrollment to a certain point, we are able to add more programs and more staffing so that the educational experience can be a little bit more broad and get into some fun things, electives that maybe we haven't had in the past can be added, because now we have a little more critical mass and the ability to add those things. So we're aiming for that. And then to always address deferred maintenance, the campus is wonderful. We're very fortunate to have a campus like this. We have no meaningful long-term debt. We have less than half a million dollars of long-term debt connected to the building, and the only reason for that is a portion of that is very low interest, and another portion is that no interest. We believe that. It's all through the United States Department of Ag Rural Development Fund. So of course, we're going to take that all day long. It's like free money. We have to pay it back, but no interest. We're taking that. But otherwise, we have no long-term debt, which is amazing. But it also means as we go forward, when you come through the parking lot, you know in a couple of years, that thing is going to have to be fixed, right? Or it's going to be like Kona Airport, closed. The roofs, you know, over time, they have to be replaced, got to paint the buildings. We've done a great job at adding a lot of air conditioning here, but those only last so many years, and they have to be replaced. So deferred maintenance. So we have some lines in there to address deferred maintenance, to save for future maintenance, to grow reserve fund. We actually do have a reserve fund for capital projects, a small one that's growing, and then we also have an operational cash reserve fund, probably a few months of operational cash that's available as we need. How do we meet our goals to sustain our program, fundraising, as Jed has already said, we've already talked about at the with the auctions. We're trying to add a five percent increase in that area, just like we are in others. Tuition, there's going to be an increase this coming year of six percent, and we're aiming for five hundred four students. And in past years, we've had tremendous success or surprises with our budget, where we plan for five hundred four, and we get five hundred ten or five hundred fourteen. So we have great fortune that way. Shawn does a great job, there's a lot of interest, especially during COVID, very surprising. We have more demand than we thought we would. We were very nervous about that, but people wanted to come to school. We were available. We were having school. We were very fortunate. K12, the amount for the coming year is going to be just under twenty thousand, and for pre-K, it's going to be twelve sixty, seventy. We're doing our very best to hold tuition as low as we can. We're just under twenty thousand. There's other schools and what you that are the same age, same size, that are well over twenty thousand by now in days due to tuition. I won't even talk about the mainland, some places on the mainland, the amounts are crazy in my mind, how much people pay for education, but it's valuable, it's meaningful, so people are willing to pay for it. We're doing our best to try and hold it down. It's not unusual for increasing tuition to rise faster than inflation. Last year, we didn't do that. Inflation was dramatically higher, it was around the seven percent range. We might have raised our tuition by four percent, so we fell behind a little bit when we did that, but we were trying to be very mindful that people were experiencing financial difficulties and trying to do our best. This year is a bit higher, but what's important is we are adding financial aid at the same rate, we're increasing it at the same rate, we're asking Jed to raise money at the same rate, higher, and it's allowing us to increase compensation and benefits meaningfully throughout the staff. And it's the beginning of a process that we're going to go through for a few years, trying to navigate, how can we do this? Where are we trying to be? How can we be in the top part of the spectrum, not average or below, or somewhere around average? We want to try and be above or below average, meaning, so that's what's happening this year. And before questions, I guess this is where Nancy comes on backup and takes over. Thank you for your time, and I'll be around.
Thank you, Sam. So we did pretty good, six forty-five in terms of time. We just wanted to open floor if there's anybody who had, sorry, I'm like, okay, I'm going to look over. If our family, if folks have questions, any, it could be about any part of what we shared, or it could be about nothing about what we shared, any questions you might have, and if, you know, it's a, this is a lift in this moment, and it's of what does it mean to lean into really trying to build a community that can sustain itself? We are feeling the impact of teachers who turn us down because there is no way they can move here from what we offer to pay them. We took that note over and over and over again. I can't tell you how many times we have to have. We lose people sometimes in the middle of the year, and when you make choices that way, eventually it will, you cannot rely on only people being dedicated to this craft. They have to be able, especially young people, see that they have a future in being in this field. When I have young people talking to me about, I'm not sure I want to do this, because I might never be able to have a family, see how I can have a family on my, on what I make, on the arc of what I've heard I'm going to make. How are we going to have a field of education? So I know that is not in private school education, I know that is not an easy, an easy path to walk to go. And I really truly appreciate the board leaning into it, and that we're going to stay committed to accessibility and how we do that as best we can for all our families. But the work that the board has been doing, and the work which has been enabling me to share with Sam Pratt, even this year, moving folks forward more in terms of base pay, has meant so much to the team already, and we're continuing to do that work. We will push hard next year on how to really support our faculty and staff to build their lives, sustain their lives, build their lives in this work, in this school, with your children. So that's, that's so much of what tonight has gone by. And so, any questions? Thank you so much for sharing the vision and information. I work for Koi Community College Resistance, right there, and I'm noticing increasingly, like people coming to our campus nighttime and just sleep, or, and I, you know, unfortunately, things are changing really fast, and there are homeless people, a number of homeless people increasing, and I was wondering if there's any collaboration between, I mean, I could ask our chancellor to, collaboration between Island School and Koi Community College and neighboring businesses to really monitor and just to ensure that our students, our faculty, our teachers and staff are safe, and in case something happened, you know, how are we going to respond? You know, these are conversations nobody really wants to have, but I felt something that was important. Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciated that, especially because I live right here. So this place is very quiet, and once basketball ends, and you know, once all the practices end, it's amazing how quiet it can be, and night, and many of the roads, I mean, it's a complex, heartfelt situation for people, right? I've been talking with interim chancellor, Margaret Sanchez, around the complexity of students living in cars, and trying to have, you know, trying to support folks of unhoused, and try, and they feel unsafe. They feel unsafe sometimes. So I think so much of it is being present. They have a great, your KCC has a wonderful security system. I'm really able to get to know them as they come and stay connected to us. We definitely have, just today, I got a call from Chad over at Cavatini, like, hey, this like just happened, just heads up. So there's this definitely a community, a network of looking out for each other, and I really appreciate that. I think actually, we've been in communication about creative ways to manage, to look at the housing crisis, and what's a role that we can play as an independent school with greater flexibility, and trying to be creative about those solutions, because it's very exciting that maybe people know that KCC got university designation, and so that means eventually housing can happen on your campus, but the process for your institution is so much more complex than what it is for ours. And so, you know, if anyone has seen the little unit that Duke and his team of students have built, right, and you grab, you drive by it every day, and you go in and out that way, and just really talking about, okay, what is, what's your trade firm? What is something that might, what are ways we might be able to partner with you? Is there a way we can use our land in a different way? Is there a way we can address housing? Those big questions we're looking at, and how to be a part of that, and how to really sort of address this crisis on our island, and how are we part of this solution? There's nothing fast, and there's absolutely partnership. I'm part of KELA, which is the educational leaders in Kauai, and so lots of different conversations around partnership and networking and supporting safety. And we do have emergency operation plans, we have lockdown plans, we have evacuation plans. The next one we're planning is early February, right, Trump? And we plan to have the fire department just come in and observe and give us any feedback. We're practically practicing, usually we have an electronic system called RUGA that helps monitor students, and we're going to practice as if we don't have any, all our electricity is out, and we still know and track all our kids and make sure we have good systems for that with our walking devices. So we practice, we practice those kind of things, too. I just came from a place with some, paid a lot of money for an emergency plan system, and I was able to, ooh, I don't want to say men online, and I was able to talk to them about those processes and look at our own systems. And so it is something we take very seriously about our own emergency processes and how to keep kids safe during the day. So we, you know, everything from checking, make sure we got locks that you can lock from the inside, and all those kind of things, basic safety checks.
I'm just speaking, I'm Kit, husband to Megan, who works in the office in development. We've got a couple of kids, six and eight at this school, and I just wanted to sort of dovetail on this whole housing issue, and maybe as it can combine with teachers. When you look at private schools around the country, there is like zero land for any of these schools. And here, you know, we're sitting and you just said how challenging it was for a university, but for private school, there's all sorts of optionality that could, could happen, and not just a capital, really straight up, but it could be a private partnership around the housing issue with teachers. And I'm curious, because I think about, you know, when you look back at inspirational stories and teacher arcs of movies and things like that, it's always like teachers living close by as the students, head public society or something like that, right? And so, you know, you could, there is, and has been, and you know, I've seen, there's definitely public private partnerships, and there's private, private partnerships that happen where somebody can come in without a capital base, and you can work out a lease rate for a bunch of two bedrooms and maybe go up there for a bunch of two bedrooms and maybe go up there in the corner and defray some of the wage that's needed to find housing around the island. Because I agree, and not only that, just the commute, the traffic and everything else. But geez, if you were right here, maybe it wouldn't be so quiet.
I'd be long, I'd be long, wouldn't be so quiet. So Kim, you're on, the committee for housing, excellent, purchasing, foreign language, excellent. Somebody come to these meetings, sharing ideas. But I, you know, I appreciate, I am a teacher who got my start, my first school. I lived on the, in the attic, they had four attic apartments to make it affordable. It was one of the most expensive areas in Long Island. I would never have been able to afford to live there. I lived in a one-bedroom attic apartment for my two years. There's no way I could have worked there than what I did. They worked me hard. I worked hard. But it was, it was, and in fact, they had a whole, they were not a boarding school. They just had faculty-staff housing on site because it made it possible. So there are models out there. The board is absolutely looking at what makes sense for our community. So don't be surprised if there are calls out for committee or ad hoc committee work to be a part of that. If you want to be a part of that creative solution and really, and I, to me, it's, you know, how do you do that responsibly? And how do you do that with environmental appropriate care, culturally appropriate care and all the important considerations that we can be a model for how to do this? We can be a model for how to provide, to have some form of a solution to a really critical problem of the island. And we can be a part of that conversation and that just make it work. Thank you for that question. Any other questions? The movie is a full, like hour and a half. Set going, happy feet. Well, if there are any other questions, we are all, we're all around. People want to come over and ask individual questions of program or know that we all are about to celebrate the birthday tomorrow. So if you want to come see the founding mothers, come back. You can go home, sleep a little bit. Come back and celebrate in the morning. It's also a wonderful celebration of seniors. So feel free to come tomorrow morning. We'd love to have you join us too. Thank you so much, everybody. And I, you know, I should have said, actually, this team over here, I mean, I know, Chris Caesar. The faculty and staff here and the folks, I did, I did pre-press yourself a little bit. Sorry, you got to come to this. But this, we're, so please, if you have time, that.